As a premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting adjourned.
Are you ready?
Ready.
I call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon.
How are you? Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Do we have any presentations this evening?
Uh, no ma'am.
Any public comment?
No ma'am.
On our consent calendar, I'll need a motion to adopt the following lease agreement with the James City County, with James City County for 107 Tuning Road and our minutes adoption. All in favor? Does anybody want to discuss anything?
We need to move it.
Make a motion.
Move it. I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries? Any public hearings?
No ma'am.
More considerations. First, we have to set a public hearing for fiscal year 2024 utility rates. Mr. Powell?
Uh, the resolution before you would establish April 11th as the date for the public hearing on the FY 24 utility rates. The proposed budget is going to reflect the multi-year plan from the approved 2020 rate study, which recommended a 3.5% annual increase in the water rates and no increase in the sewer rates. Under the proposed budget, the monthly water and sewer bill for a typical 5,000 gallon a month user would increase $1 a month from $45.71 to $46.71. Combined bill would remain the third lowest among the 18 Hampton Roads localities. The only other proposed change is the increase in the grinder pump maintenance fee from $400 per year to $425 per year. Staff recommends approval of the resolution establishing April 11th, 2023, as the date for the public hearing for the FY 24 utility rates.
Are there any questions for staff? Otherwise, I'll look to the board for a motion.
I'll move the public hearing.
Mr. Powell, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Next, we have a contract award for $101,590 for grounds maintenance service for lift stations and wells. Mr. Powell?
You, you may recall that last year you approved a contract for grounds maintenance services. JCSA decided to issue a new RFP this year, and an RFP review committee selected Howard Lawn Care as the most qualified. Howard Lawn Care successfully completed projects for JCSA in the past. An initial one-year contract of $101,590 was negotiated, and the contract contains provisions for annual renewals over a five-year period under mutual agreement. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the award of the contract to Howard Lawn Care in the amount of $101,590.
Are there any questions for staff or is there a motion?
Move it, move adoption.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Oh, and Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Board requests and directives. And before we start, I would like to ask Mr. Powell if you would please address the toxic chemical spill in Ohio, if you have any information on that, please?
Um, you know, I, I can't speak to what's happening in Ohio and if there's any groundwater contamination there or not, but I, I can say in the event that if there was, there wouldn't be any concern for our groundwater supply here. The distance and the geological features between here and there, our aquifers are confined. So if, if there are any customers that are worried about any, any impact that might have on the JCSA water supply, there's no, no need for concern.
Very good. Anybody else?
Just, uh, I always like to put in a little asterisk there and note that significant number of Roberts District residents are in the Newport News system, and so as part of the reason we moved ahead to put some protections around their water supplies, which are more surface oriented.
Yeah, thanks. Any else?
Um, I had one other question, and I just wanted to see if we can get an update. The, the rate study email you sent us about the rate study for the dedicated fire supply lines is?
Right.
Do you have an update on when we can expect more information on that?
Uh, yes, sir. We, we do have the consultant under contract now, and the timeframe is projected to be 90 to 120 days.
Okay. And is, when was the last time we did this update on the study?
Well, we did a comprehensive rate study in 2020.
Okay. This is just an update then?
Well, I, I would, I would actually, it's, 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 it's an addendum, really. This is, this particular issue wasn't directly addressed in the, in the 2020 rate study.
Okay, all right. It'll, it'll be a couple of months then.
Yes, yeah, well, probably, probably three to four months.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. General manager's update.
I have no further update.
Okay, well, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on March 14th, 2023, for the regular meeting.
So move.
Mr. Powell, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. We are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Powell?
All right. Call this meeting of James City County Board of Supervisors on February 14th, and I wonder before we get to roll call and that sort of thing, I want to wish everybody a Valen, Happy Valentine's Day. I'm sure this is exactly where you want to be tonight, so thank you for coming out. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is vice chair to the board. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powatin District and is chair to the board. Sitting to my left, Adam Kinsman, our county attorney. I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you. All right, for the audience benefit, the applicant for public hearing number one and number two, the F D withdrawal and the private energy project has asked that the case be postponed until March 14th meeting. The public hearing will remain open until March 14th meeting. However, staff and the applicant will not be given a presentation this evening. Anyone who has signed up during the public hearing may do so, may, may do so this evening or may wait until the meeting on March 14th. Please note that you may only speak once during the public hearing, either tonight or March 14th. If you wish to wait, and necessary, and you, and want to speak this evening, you may. And that'll come underneath the public hearing as we move forward. Next, we'll move into a moment of silence, and our pledge leader, and our pledge leader is from the Roberts District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce Caroline Robertson, who's a fifth grade student at Laurel Lane Elementary School. Caroline's now one of the big dogs there, or as I mentioned before, she's a big penguin at Rawls Bird. She is very much a leader in, in the elementary school. I'm sure we'll be looking forward to moving on to middle school, although it is middle school. And she is very active in Williamsburg Aquatic Club, as well as enjoying a lot of leadership skills at Laurel Lane. Her parents are Leah and Clay Robertson, and it's my pleasure to ask her to come forward to lead us in the pledge after a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Caroline, if you'd come up, I've got a certificate and a pin for you. Would you like to take a picture with Caroline?
Sure.
Yeah, let's go around. Come on around.
Do you come in?
No, sir. Unless I have to.
Do we have any public comment speakers? Peg Borman. A little trashy now.
Might want to clarify that. Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Kinsman, ladies and gentlemen, and Happy Valentine's Day to you all. So I know that you all might be wanting to be somewhere else too tonight. I'm Peg Borman. I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot. And before I go any further, I want to say that I want to honor Mr. Oyer in his passing this past month. I, I feel honored to be able to sit in his spot each month, each month, and I come up here to talk a little trash. I admired him when he was doing all of his public comments here. But I'm here to, again, to talk just a little bit of trash to you, and I wanted to say on Saturday, I participated in a cleanup on Centerville Road, and I'm pleased to say we only picked up three bags of litter, a couple of large pieces of, of blue wood. But I must tell you that there was at least 65 bottles of glass, which we had six buckets of glass that we recycled to Owens, Illinois. And I think I'll take some stock out in Corona because, because there were so many bottles of Coronas out there. I don't know where it's all coming from, but I'd sure like to know. But there was nothing but alcoholic containers, no, no soft drinks or anything. But we, for everybody's information, the primary roads and the secondary roads have just been cleaned up in the last three weeks by the county using VDOT's contractors. And I'm, I want to thank them for getting out there so quickly and, and seeing that that was done. It was, of course, as you probably know, five minutes after they picked it all up, it was all trashed again a little bit, but it's not near as bad as it was. Our litter index, where we go out and survey the, the litter and the illegal dumps as a group from the commission, that's, we moved that to the 24th. I said in my presentation at the last meeting that it would be the next week, but we haven't done it yet. I saw a posting on a group next door, something like that, that folks are upset about the fact that others somehow managed to miss the trash containers and the recycling containers and all of that. And that distresses me too, but it's somehow rather, both of them are readily accessible, but you just can't quite get it into those two containers. And sometimes there's recycles in the trash cans also, which is not nice. I have a feeling that some people no longer have any pride in helping keep our county clean, and that distresses me. But it's a crying shame that we can't all be on the same page, but I guess people have different ideas about things. But we all need to stay engaged in trying to keep the county clean and protect our environment. And on another issue I want to address, today I was trying to get information from our Director of General Services, and there was three times that the phone call was dropped, and it wasn't my phone, it was Verizon's, and she had to go outside of the building in order to talk to me. And so, but I want to say good things about the fact that I changed from Verizon to Cox Mobile in November, and I'm happy to say I haven't missed a call or dropped a call since I changed over, and I'm very pleased with it. I know a lot of people don't like Cox, but that's okay. Everybody's got their own opinion about that, too. So anyway, thanks for hearing me today and talking my trash and, and everything else, and you all have a good day.
Thank you.
May I make two quick comments?
Yes, ma'am.
One, Peg brought up a very, Ms. Borman, excuse me, brought up a very valid comment regarding recycling, and I want to encourage people, the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority, VPPSA, if you go on their Facebook page, on their web, they have a very informative little films that they do regarding what you can and cannot put in your recycling. When you haphazardly throw a plastic bag, food line, that gets caught up in their mechanics, it shuts them down. You know, that impacts recycling, impacts your, what you're paying. You know, it, it really is important to pay attention to what you throw in your recycling container. So I just urge everybody to get out there. And then I would just add that the other day I was out in my front yard, and there was a woman in my neighborhood walking with a trash bag, said she carries it every other day, and it was almost full. So please do your part and don't litter. So thank you for letting me go out of place, but.
Glad, glad to. Any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public comment, and we'll go to the consent calendar. Is there any items that, and there's only one item on there, contract award for 188,500 for the James City County Marina Covered Boat Slip Demolition.
Move the adoption in the consent calendar.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
If she cares.
All right, next, we'll move into public hearings, and our PC rep tonight is Barbara Knoll. Thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here. And our number one and number two, of course, have been postponed. If there's anyone who wishes to speak tonight or would rather wait until that comes back on the March 14th, you can only speak one time. I would suggest that you wait for the March 14th, but if you feel the need to speak tonight and can't make it, please come forward. Ms. Smith, come on up. Thank you. Yes, you've got it there.
She was really kind to warn about that earlier, just not positive I'm going to be able to make that meeting, so.
Thank you.
I felt like I'd speak tonight, so. Good afternoon, I'm Anne Marie Smith, and I am thanking you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking about the solar project and really any future solar projects for our county. I kind of wanted to bring up three points to consider before this comes up again, before we move forward as a community with any additional solar projects. The first one is a question, what data evaluations have been performed to validate that the current solar farms output is actually meeting what was promised? And then further regarding the existing solar farms, what environmental evaluations have been performed on the soil and the wildlife of the lands and the surrounding areas to compare its impact to what was proposed for those particular farms? So proper evaluation of former projects must be performed so we may move forward on approvals with correct information to make informed decisions. Second point I would be like to make is dangerous components such as lead and toxic cadmium can be washed off by rain through cracked or broken panels. So are the materials used in the proposed solar panels of this project disclosed? And if so, may the public obtain this information? So no solar project should be approved without all material elements and components fully disclosed, both to you all and to the community. Thirdly, recycling and disposing of solar panels needs to be a part of any approval, or the citizens will end up bearing the burden of these costs. This might look like a bond or another avenue placed up front by the company to cover any end-of-life disposal. So I'd ask that the board present this information to the public before considering moving forward with any additional solar panel projects. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to keep that public hearing open. Any others that wish to speak tonight? All right, we'll keep those two open and move those to the March 14th deadline. All right, next, number three is SUP-22-0022, zero point four, period, 4711 Rochambeau Drive, tourist home. Ms. Yates, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Stewart, Berchem, property owner, has applied for special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of a three-bedroom, single-family home located at 4711 Rochambeau, excuse me, Rochambeau Drive tourist home. The property is zoned A1, general agricultural, is designated rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, and is located outside the primary service area. If granted, this SUP would allow for short-term rentals throughout the year. No changes to the footprint of the home are proposed. Staff finds favorable factors for this application include the presence of adequate off-street parking, and the applicant has stated that he will obtain the proper licensing and inspections for this change of use. Staff finds the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is it expected to negatively impact levels of service for roads and other public services. At its January 4th, 2023, regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted four to three to recommend approval of this SUP request to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. While staff believes the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that the proposal is not fully consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Plan recommendations for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. In addition, the applicant is available to you as well.
I may have some in just a minute.
Okay.
All right, is the applicant going to speak? Okay, I'll wait till then.
Okay. All right, she might hold on for a little bit. All right, PC report? Nope, we'll do, do the PC, and then we'll get to you.
Good evening, Board, and Chairman Hippel, and Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman.
I'm Barbara Knoll, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission. On January 4th, our regular meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this special use permit, application for a tourist home at 4711 Rochambeau Drive. Members of the Planning Commission who had concerns with this application noted the owner will not be residing in the home during the rental period. The members also noted that special use permits are in perpetuity, and we do have concern over this, if the owner would decide to sell their property at a later time. Members of the Planning Commission who were in support of the application noticed, noted that the necessary safeguards include that this property is not internal to a neighborhood, the owner resides on the property, and is seeking to rent the dwelling only when they are not in residence, and there would be oversight of the property by a family member who works in the area. The Planning Commission discussed the Comprehensive Plan as both aspirational and as a guiding document. One commission member added that it may be necessary to take another look at the performance standards. Following the public hearing, the commission voted to recommend approval of this application with four votes in favor and three votes opposed.
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and our first speaker. Other want? Other want, is that tried? There you go. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so, well, I just wanted to say that my dad applied for it, that my parents' property, I would be overseeing it for them while they travel. They only plan to rent it mid-spring through fall, and still want to pop back in in the summer to see us and the grandkids. I, they want to travel because they just retired, my dad retired from the county. They just want to enjoy the summers and have their home to come to in the fall and winter for holidays. I would be overseeing it. I come to Williamsburg five, six times a week. I try not to get here every day over the week, but I drive right by their house every time I come through. So I would be here to oversee anything or deal with anything that needed to be taken care of.
So I just wanted to clarify if I could. So you're renting out the entire home as opposed to renting out individual rooms?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Did you want to do that, or do you want me?
Wait a minute.
Okay, so, because I had a follow-up question with that, you're familiar and okay with the updated SUP condition with?
Yes, the sunset.
With the new, the new conditions?
Was coming back in 2025.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're okay with that and aware of it. All right, very good. That's it, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and look for the board for direction.
I would move for approval, but with the addition of the compliance review that we have been passed out, that has been discussed with the applicants, which basically gives a three-year opportunity to come back and do an evaluation and update, but the specific language which is in here, and I understand from the county attorney, I don't have to read it all, I just have a copy of it that we all have at our seats, that made one of the conditions of the SUP approval.
Mr. Drysonhour, just for the benefit of the public, would you mind sort of summarizing what the?
Essentially, what it does is it says, before November 28th, 2025, which is three years from the time they made the application, the property owner essentially had to submit a letter to the Planning Director requesting either continuance or cancellation of the SUP. If they request cancellation, it doesn't require anything. If they want continuance, essentially, we've set up a streamlined procedure which does not cost the applicant anything to come back and do a review, and staff will bring us a review of the compliance with the requirements of the SUP, any particular, if there are any particular complaints or problems or areas for us to take a look at, and then we can renew it at that time. It basically gives the board the opportunity to review the compliance of the thing, so therefore it's labeled compliance review.
I just had a question, perhaps Mr. Kinsman or Mr. Holt, one of you. What if in between now and three years, there's an issue? I assume that we have an avenue that we can pursue, that the SUP is not being followed, or that?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Larson. The county code already has a provision in there where the board can initiate proceedings to revoke an SUP for a violation of any number of enumerated circumstances are in the code, like violation of the SUP conditions, violation of the county code, and I think you could do the same if you had a number of complaints, that the board could take that back up and determine whether or not it was still a viable use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, sir. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Drysonhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we're going into number four, SUP-22-0023, period, 2878 Monticello Avenue, Torrance Home. Ben, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Jeffrey Russett has applied for a special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of a three-bedroom, single-family home at 2878 Monticello Avenue. The property is zoned A1 general agricultural, is designated rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, and is located outside of the primary service area. If granted, this SUP would allow for short-term rentals throughout the year. No changes to the footprint of the home are proposed. Staff finds some factors favorable for this application, such as there being adequate off-street parking, the size of the lot, and existing vegetation providing screening and buffering to most adjacent properties, and that the applicant has stated that they will obtain the proper licensing and inspections. Staff also finds the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is expected to negatively impact levels of service for roads and other public services. While staff believes the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that the proposal is not fully consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Plan recommendations for short-term rentals, since one of the four development standards, the property owner living on the property during its use as a tourist home is not met. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. At the January 4th, 2023 regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted four to three to recommend denial of this SUP request to the Board of Supervisors. Should the Board of Supervisors approve this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Questions?
I have some, but I'll wait just a second.
All right.
If I may.
Might call you back, man. Thank you. PC, Ms. Knoll.
At the January 4th Planning Commission meeting, held a public hearing for this special use permit application for a tourist home at 2878 Monticello Avenue. Some members of the Planning Commission had concerns with this case, including how the facility would access, would access Monticello Avenue, and the concerns of surrounding property owners. Commission members also noted that the adjacent property, if should be developed into residential subdivision in the future, this application, if approved, could be more of an impact on neighboring properties. Those members of the Commission who were in support of this case discussed how the large size of the lot would minimize potential disruptions to neighboring parcels. On a motion to recommend approval of this application, the motion failed by a vote of three in favor and four against.
Questions? Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and our first speaker, Mr. Getty. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bernard Getty. It's a pleasure to be here representing Jeff and Jill Russett, who were sitting with me in the back row there. The Russets acquired this property in October of 2022 and are continuing the operation of the Pet Resort at Greensprings on the property. I think several of you might be familiar with that facility. Property is designated rural lands, it's not within a subdivision, and the access off the property is directly off Monticello. So Monticello is here, here's the access road into the property. Be oriented, this is Brickbat Road, and Sawmill Road comes and ends right here. If any of you, and sort of zoom it in a little bit, this is the Pet Resort and Russett's barn, this is the corner of the property under consideration. You can see where the pavement ends here, and there's a driveway into the home in question. Quick photo tour of access, this is coming off Monticello into the private road leading into the property. There is a driveway, there's an owner parcel right here on the left, I think you saw on the overhead, and then you come to the entrance to the Pet Resort in this home. This is the barn in the background here, you'll see the house in question. This is the private drive I mentioned. You'll see the property is fenced, and right-hand side as you're going down toward the home, this is an adjoining property owner, has a small pasture with horses. This is the end of the road, and as you can see, it truly is the end of the road. There is no road connection through towards Sawmill or the properties in the back, and like I said, the property, this entire property is fenced. This is looking at the house itself, you'll see the parking area here and the Pet Resort in the background. This is looking toward the house, along the rear property line, if you will, the side of the house, and you can see, you really can't see anything through the, through the trees. This is looking from the front porch of the house out in the same situation. And finally, looking from the back porch out, you really can't see anything but trees. I agree with most of the staff report, I think there are no adverse impacts from this use. It's a 16-acre parcel, so there's plenty of room for folks to walk and enjoy the space there on the site. It's well-screened. It does meet three of the four development standards from the Comprehensive Plan, and as was mentioned, the only standard it's not met is the owners will not live there. They live about three and a half miles away. I think it's a unique factor here, though, that the owner's business is on the parcel, and there will be employees present there from 7:00 AM to 6:30 PM, seven days a week. And as I mentioned, the Russets themselves are just three and a half miles away. They do agree with the proposed conditions and agree with the new condition before you all tonight on periodic certification of compliance and a chance to review the SUP. And with that, we would respectfully ask you to approve the SUP. So we're so happy to answer any questions.
Yes, if I might, I just want to confirm, the property would be, it would be the house for rent and not rooms for rent?
Right, correct.
It would be the entire house?
I think that's correct. Yep.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I just had one question. Mr. Getty, we had talked about the, an objection that was raised at the
Yeah.
Planning Commission about the potential for subdivision?
Yes.
Yeah. So this condition doesn't really address that particular notion?
Aye.
Do you have any objection to including that?
Um, requiring a review if there's a further subdivision of this parcel?
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't think the Russets have any intention of subdividing, so yeah, that'd be fine.
So, so the notion here was simply that one of the members of the public spoke about the possibility that this parcel could be subdivided in the future, and that this, that the question would be whether in that case, they would have to come back for renewal of that, of this SUP at that time?
If it were, if they wanted to subdivide it, they'd have to come back for all of it?
Right.
Right. And is it, is it, what's the zoning out there?
A1.
A1, so it's 20 acres or less, so they couldn't, unless they did a family subdivision.
Acres is property.
Is it 16 acres, is it 20 acres?
Is that right?
Is it not, is it not grandfathered?
Yeah.
It is, it's grandfathered, it's under 20, under 25 acres. Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's right.
So it would be, so it would be three, three units per, three acres per unit?
Yeah, it could be three, that's right.
Yeah, that's, that's really what the, what the concern was, to put an additional condition in there.
Okay, good with that?
So the additional would be if the applicant decided to subdivide the property, they would need to come back?
Right.
Want to speak to your?
Yeah. On that, heads in the back.
We had, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good with that? Okay. Adam? Do we need to add anything to the?
While you're going through, are there public speakers?
Uh, no, that's the last one. I'll go ahead and close the.
My preference, if I could have like maybe five minutes to write that up, to be a little bit more formal than what we've done?
Yes, sir.
Can you?
We can take a break?
Can you give me like five?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to get it so we know we've got it right, which I'll agree with.
Precise.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could move on to Starbucks, and
Okay.
If y'all want to keep going. All right, we'll come back to this one, we'll put this one on pause for a few minutes to give the county attorney time to put that together, and we'll move on to number five with SUP-22-00257504 Richmond Road. Thomas, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. Ms. Lauren Sweeney of Kimley Horn has applied for a special use permit to allow the operation of a coffee shop with drive-through that will generate more than 100 additional trips to and from the site during the peak hour of operation. This proposal is for the property addressed 7504 Richmond Road. This property is zoned B1 general business with proffers, is designated community commercial within the adopted land use map, and is located inside the primary service area. This proposal is for an adaptive reuse of the vacant bank with drive-through into a coffee shop with drive-through. The adaptive reuse of vacant commercial buildings within the PSA is specifically recommended within the goal for the land use chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. This proposal would utilize the existing access and site design for the parcel, meaning access would come solely from Norwich Lane, no direct access from Richmond Road would be permitted. Staff finds this proposal to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the surrounding zoning and development. Staff has proposed SUP conditions to mitigate the potential impacts of this proposal. At its January meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application, subject to the proposed conditions, by a vote of seven to zero. Staff recommends the board approve this application tonight, subject to the proposed conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and a representative from Kimley Horn is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Just want to state that, you know, gosh, if you don't approve this, you probably get run out of town on a rail. But the, the only, one of the concerns that I have, first of all, I applaud them for repurposing a building, which we get a lot of hassle on, but we can't force a retailer to do something like that, so I'm glad that they, that they did that. I worry a little bit about what the impact's going to be for the people that are going to make a, is a U-turn allowed at that light there at, you know, where you would have to turn into the shopping center? Is there, is a U allowed, do you know?
I don't know offhand. I will say the applicant did prepare a traffic impact analysis as part of this proposal that was reviewed by VDOT.
Okay.
And the level of service for the intersection of Richmond Road and Norwich Lane would still be overall at a level of service of B, which meets our policy.
Right. Well, we've taken the grocery store out of there, which I'm sure, but you just, you just don't know Starbucks. I mean, let's face it, so.
Could be more than a grocery store.
Yeah, I mean, it really could. But just hope people are cautious, especially on opening day, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Thomas.
Yes, sir.
All right, PC report, one more time, and then we're going to let you go.
It's a short. The January 4th meeting of the Planning Commission, we held a public hearing for the special use permit for a coffee shop with a drive-through at 7504 Richmond Road. Members of the Planning Commission discussed the site design and traffic with the applicant, checking to be sure that traffic study and proposed site design will not produce traffic issues for the area, which was confirmed by the applicant. Overall, the Planning Commission supports this application and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the proposed conditions.
Questions? Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Any speaker cards? All right, no speaker cards, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and before I look to the board for discussion and a motion and all, I, you know, we get a lot of grief on trying to reuse the buildings and trying to put people in them and all this, this is just another case, as with the old Outlet Mall and what we were able to do with that, and I'm, I'm glad we have a business, and our economic development team is always trying to put this in place and, and try to fill these old buildings, so this is a good example of, of the county working with business and the citizens in order to repurpose these buildings, and, and I'm glad Starbucks was able to, you know, fit into that building, and I think it'll stay very busy. So I'll look for the board for a motion or?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Drysonhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It looks like we may be going, need three more minutes? You good? Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the applicant's attorney and Mr. Holt from Planning, and I believe we're all in agreement. If you'll look at your condition that you added on the passage of time, this will sound very similar, we just use that as the basis, and I think it works fine, so this would be the proposed additional condition entitled subdivision. Should the property be subdivided? added on the passage of time, this will sound very similar. We just used that as the basis, and I think it works fine. So this would be the proposed additional condition entitled subdivision. Should the property be subdivided, the owner of the property must submit a letter to the Planning Director requesting either continuance or cancellation of the SGP. If the owner requests cancellation of the SGP or does not submit the required letter, the Planning Director shall initiate proceedings for the Board of Supervisors to revoke the SGP pursuant to section 24-12 of the county code. If the owner of the property requests continuance of the SGP, the owner must also submit a statement certifying that the use and the property are in compliance with all SGP conditions. The Planning Director shall then prepare a memorandum setting forth any and all complaints received by staff since issuance of the SGP and any violations of the SGP conditions. The Planning Director shall place the compliance review on a Board of Supervisors' board meeting as a public hearing item at no cost to the property owner. Following the public hearing, the Board of Supervisors shall determine whether to initiate proceedings to revoke the SGP due to incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, violation of the SGP conditions, or any other reason related to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, or may instead set a new compliance review date.
Thank you. Mr. Getty, your clients are good with that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, question. Now, is that a rewrite of this, of the one we had earlier, or is this an additional one?
That would be an additional condition, sir.
An additional, so we basically have a compliance review, and then we have a subdivision?
We completely stole the other condition, but it would be a new one.
Okay, as long as there, as long as there are two separate complete, complete entries that will be in there. That's why I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Not very original on the fly, sir.
That's okay. That gets the job done.
I just had a question. Mr. Getty, or your, I did what you asked me to do. I drove down there yesterday. I was, first of all, it is a, I don't want to say busy. That's not, but it was a very active site already. So I would hope that, you know, that there's a condition about six people. So even if, it's an additional three cars. I mean, the barn, there looked like there were about five cars there. It looks like maybe that's where customers and employees work. And I apologize to whoever was driving the white pickup truck. I was trying to find the, the right address. That, that house needs a, needs a house number on, just in case. But very well-kept property. I, I couldn't see, I saw the one neighbor, couldn't see the other neighbor. It didn't seem to me as though the disruption on the road was going to be tremendous because there was, like I said, there was already traffic coming in and out and didn't look where people went off the road or anything like that. I wondered if the applicants had had a chance to talk to the neighbors that had expressed some, that they were against it at the Planning Commission? Didn't know if there'd been any communication?
Don't believe so.
Okay. But I'm hoping with this passage of time and with the additional of the subdivision, I would hope that, that the neighbors would feel, you know, more confident that there's going to, there would be a review process in case there was any issues, or if there is any issues, like we stated earlier, it can always come back to the board for review.
Let me say that, I mean, the Russets aren't looking for any issues. They'll put in their literature on the home where people can go and where they can't go and.
Well, there's plenty of parking at the house and with people being on site with the animals. Now, what I, how are they going to keep the animals quiet from nine to seven in the morning when the people that are renting the house?
Bear in mind, people, up until October, people were living in the house.
I, that's, I wondered. Okay.
It's not like the animals aren't used to people.
So.
Animal lovers, don't worry about it.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions?
I, I would offer that I feel it's important to disclose that I am a client. I have reservations for my, my dogs out there. And I would, I would say that the biggest challenge I think you're going to have with this is finding the house. The first time I went out there, I got my GPS and I wandered around Brickbat Road and Sawmill Road and I wandered around for about a half an hour. And finally, I called back and the lady said, when you come around the curve, there's a little tiny sign. And when I found the sign, I found my way in there. And it's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful area. But I think, I think it's, the biggest challenge for most folks is going to be making sure they find the right road to get off on in there. But.
And I just make, make a point that in reading the Planning Commission minutes, and Ms. Nelken, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this, it did seem that the issues that were raised, one was about access to the property from a Sawmill Road, which does not actually come through that area. And the other was the one that, the question about subdivision, which is why I'd raised that point with Mr. Getty earlier about the condition for, in case of subdivision, that this would have to be reviewed again. So I think that is a fairly, fairly good response to the concerns that were expressed at the Planning Commission.
I don't want to, do you have other questions?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to move the motion with the, with the two additions to the passage of time. Is that okay to say? Two additions to the?
Yes, ma'am. The two additions, one was the, the passage of time, which was placed in, at the dais when you first hear, and then the one subdivision one that I just read to the board.
Okay. I would move it with those two additions.
Roll call. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in real quick here while we're talking about these rentals, I think it'd be important for the board to have a discussion at a later date to talk about some of these conditions that we've been talking about. I know there's a lot of options that are, are out there, and I think it would be beneficial for us to figure out what we're going to do and talk about it. And so I'd just like to put that out there that I'm looking forward to being able to. That way we could, it would help staff too, I think. So if, at some point, if we're able to get that on our agenda for a discussion, I'd like to be able to do that, please.
All right, we'll set that up on one of our
Thank you.
upcoming work sessions.
Very good.
And it won't be the next one, but we'll see where we fit it in.
Yeah, because I'm sure we have more
We do.
in the lineup.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is SGP dash 22 dash 0031 Stonehouse Elementary School Learning College. Ms. Yates, welcome back in.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Stephen Tally has applied for a special use permit to allow for the installation of one temporary learning cottage holding two classrooms and two ADA restrooms at Stonehouse Elementary School located at 3651 Rochambeau Drive. Stonehouse Elementary School is anticipated to have an enrollment of 833 students in the 2023-2024 school year. Per the applicant's narrative, WJCCPS is in the process of modifying the ratio of students to teachers based on percentage of students in each school that are receiving free or reduced lunches. With smaller class sizes, WJCCPS faces an immediate need for two additional classrooms. The property is zoned PO, public lands, and is designated federal, state, and county land on the 2045 comprehensive plan land use map. If granted, the proposed learning cottage will accommodate up to 50 additional students and is expected to be in use from academic calendar year 2023-2024 through the academic, academic calendar year 2026-2027. Staff finds the proposal compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comp plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And representatives from WJCC public schools are available as well.
Questions?
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards, sir? Close the public hearing. Look for the board for discussion and decisions.
Move the motion?
Motion on the floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under the board considerations, amendments to the board meeting calendar, I need a motion to amend the board's adopted meeting calendar to add the board retreat on Friday, March 10th, 2023, at AM at Legacy Hall at 4301 Newtown Avenue, Williamsburg, Virginia.
At what time?
What time? At 8:00 a.m. What did I say?
That's what I thought you said.
Okay. We made it a seven if y'all want.
All right.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Maybe the new Starbucks can provide coffee.
All right, board request and directives. Anyone?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I would like, I have sympathy announcements to make, unfortunately. I'd like to offer sympathies to Linda Wallace Cody on the recent passing of her husband. Linda's been an active member of the community for a long time, and I had the pleasure of meeting Cody at a lot of community meetings, and I know you have as well. And I did speak with Linda and did offer our thoughts and prayers to her. And then also, I'd like to extend my deepest sympathies to Brian Oyer and his family on the recent loss of his dad, Mr. Ed Oyer. And Ed was a, as you mentioned, he was a frequent flyer here, and Peg is keeping his seat warm over there for us. But he was here for many years and holding people accountable on all sorts of issues. So once he decided he was going to retire from attending, we made sure that he was honored by having the plaque put out there on his seat. So, and I believe Mr. McGlynn, you attended his services. So I did speak with Brian at length, and he and I were able to share fond memories about his dad. And, and I think we've got a great photo of all of us together with him. And we're going to be taking a few minutes to honor Mr. Oyer at our next regular meeting.
Good man.
Oh, and one more thing I would be remiss. Annie coming to one of your local schools, Providence Classical, is doing a performance of Annie. Hope you can come, Ms. Larson. March 10th at 7:00 p.m., March 11th at 1:00 at Williamsburg Community Chapel. Tickets are available at www.ticketor.com, and I'm sure you can find it all on there. My grandson is playing rooster. So I've done my grandma duties. Thank you very much. Hope everyone can buy tickets and attend.
Yes, sir. Very quickly, quite busy since the last meeting. Did a WMBG interview on January 25th. One of the more interesting things I got called on to do was to attend a Citizens Group, actually in York County. They called me to come talk to them about our code of ethics that we have in our policies. And apparently, there's an attempt to get something very similar. And they wanted me to talk to them a little bit about the origins of ours and how it works and everything. And they were very complimentary about the, the code that we have in place. I did meet with the representatives of the National Firefighters, our local firefighters, about their, their issues. I think they're going to be passing around and meeting with most of the board members. And obviously, one of their biggest concerns is the post-retirement medical issue for them. I met with a bunch of my fellow resident supports Colony at the annual meeting on February 4th, and we had a very interesting briefing. We're going to be one of the first big communities to get the Shentel Glow Fiber. They are under agreement with the Homeowners Association, putting in the infrastructure. And they had quite a detailed briefing about the services that would be available and the charges that would be charged for the services. And I'm eagerly looking forward to the opportunity to see what they, they bring to our community. Hopefully, that'll cover more and more of our community area where we have competition. February 6th, we had a retreat for the chamber, and Mr. Kinsman and Ms. Larson were, were there. We spent about four hours with folks doing a review of their, their planning process and mission and vision. And then last night, I was over at the Palatton Creek Watershed Management Plan Public Meeting that was held at the rec center. Mr. McGlynn was there. We had quite a good turnout. And there were some very interesting questions I'm looking forward to. Guess it's going to be probably about June before we get the final report back to the board. I think there'll be some very critical information that we will get out of that. Couple other real quick things. I'm going to say just a word or two about Ed Oyer. I will leave most of it to my fellow board members who have known him for quite a while. But he was definitely a man for the people here. My, my favorite experiences, though, with him were in veterans organizations. As a fellow veteran, he was a man who served his country very well and went on to serve his common, this Commonwealth and his fellow citizens very well. So he will be very sorely missed. One other thing I will bring out is that I've been talking to the county administrator and the, we're going to do like we did again last year, March 29th, in case you don't know, is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. The local Vietnam Veterans Chapter co-sponsored with the county and with the Department of Veteran Services from the state of Virginia, and, and this year with the cosponsorship of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We'll be holding a ceremony at Veterans Park over by the flagpole where the memorial is at 1:00 p.m. on March the 29th, which is a Wednesday. We will have, our speaker is going to be Major General Celia Adolphy, retired U.S. Army. She is a resident of Ford's Colony. She's agreed to be our speaker. She's also very active in the Daughters of the American Revolution. So we're looking forward to a good turnout. Last year, we had, I think the first time we did it, we had about 60 or 70 people. Last year, we had 150 people. So we're, we're hoping that we'll get a very good turnout. And I'll pass this information on to the county for distribution so people can know, know about it. And the other, one little thing that I, I just wanted to bring to the attention of our citizens, because this is something I did not know until a citizen sent me an email. He got pulled over by our local police at the intersection of Long Hill and Old Town, new intersection there. There's a right-hand turn on red, red arrow. And he turned, pulled up, stopped, looked at the red arrow, yeah, okay. And he just turned right, and the cops pulled him over and says, it's against the law. You may turn right on red after you stop and it's clear if there is a regular traffic light. If it's a red round light, if it is a red turn arrow, you may not proceed on a right turn until it turns green. Now, we have about three or four of those around the community. But this is a little bit of a gotcha, because when I found out about this today and I spoke to the county attorney, I said, I'm just lucky they didn't get me.
Why did they need one there?
I, it's, and there's, if you look at coming into, off of 199 into Mounts Bay, there's a right-hand turn lane that has a right arrow. If you turn right on red there, on the right on the red arrow, it's against the law. So I think that it's something that was put about 10 years ago in the code. Most of our citizens, I'm sure, are not aware of it. I think our police are being very generous and not being overtly aggressive, but they are stopping people and letting them know. So I wanted people to know about that.
I want to put that on our legislative agenda for next year.
I think so.
Get a fix on that.
That's it. Thank you.
So as Mr. Eisenhour indicated, I also attended the Palatton Creek update session last night. Found it very interesting and look forward to, to hearing more about it. And with Ms. Larson, participated in Zoom meeting along with the school board with some of our legislators to talk about school issues. And especially, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get some amendments to this year's budget that would have a profound impact on funding for our schools, in particular lifting the cap on support positions, which would bring us about $2 million additionally to the school system that we are currently already paying. So it would, it would have a real strong effect. And I did want to spend a few minutes just talking about Mr. Oyer. I had no idea, and I think most of us did not have any idea that Mr. Oyer's nickname was Quill. He and, and his wife Marion, known as Tiger, were real presence in the community for, for such a long time. I did have the opportunity to attend the memorial event, and I know Mr. Eversen, I see out in the audience, was also there when I came in. One of our former colleagues, Ron Nervett, was, was there as well. It certainly was the case that I enjoyed the opportunity to talk with his sons, Steve and Brian, about Ed's contributions to the county and his, and his interesting perspective in some, in some ways. He kept detailed notes about everything that happened at this board. Those records were meticulously maintained. He was able to tell us how many times we voted unanimously on, on items and how many times we divided and took certain pride in telling us that we voted together 98% of the time, I think, at one point. To me, it was, it was a great opportunity to get to know a little bit better his sons and his grandsons. and his grandson, Brandon, who I think we all recognize. Ed had a very soft spot in his heart for, for Brandon, especially after his, his military service, and got to meet Brandon, who was Ed's grandson, his wife Jill, and Ed's great-grandson, Andrew, at, at the service. Sometimes it's important to, to remember that, you know, we, we got to see Ed when he was performing one of his favorite tasks, which was being kind of burr under the saddle of the Board of Supervisors. And would, he, he would take great pains to make sure that we were aware of his concerns about our fiscal policies and other decisions that we were making. But he was also outside of those meetings, a very warm and caring and compassionate person. We sometimes forget that. For many years, he did the same kind of work on public policy with George Grayson, a former delegate to the Virginia General Assembly. And George learned that the real secret to harnessing Ed's energy was to make him a volunteer staff member. And so Ed, for a good number of years, traveled up to Richmond regularly to keep an eye on what was going on in the General Assembly and to help out where staffing wasn't necessarily available as fully as legislators might like. And I also just wanted to, to make note of the fact that Ed and Marion endowed a scholarship at Thomas Nelson Community College. I think he was frequently looking for ways in which he could have a lasting impact, and that certainly is one of which he and Marion can be very proud. And so we'll miss Ed. Everybody recognizes he was a unique character who cared very deeply about lots of things, but also cared for people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, my sympathies to Mr. Oyer's family. I did want to also mention that a few, a week or so ago, James Madison University had a terrible, had students that were involved in a terrible automobile accident, and one of those that unfortunately lost their life was a resident of our area, Joshua Martis, and I want to offer our sympathy to his family. They had five students involved, three of them killed. So very, very tough time. I want to, I'm going to be kind of all over the place, and I apologize for that, but I want to go back to a point that Supervisor McGlinnan made in our calls that we had with the legislators. One of the facts that Dr. Heron pointed out was about support positions, and that there were over two hundred of those positions that W J C C was paying for, but only in the twenties of what the state was paying for. So we are carrying the burden for much-needed people, but, but there is a real deficit and issue where that is concerned. And I thought that, that the data that Dr. Heron provided was very important. I, I, I went to the chamber retreat. I, I spoke with the firefighters. Chair Hippel and I met with Congressman Whitman. I'm sure he'll probably cover that. And I went up to V S B A, and they have, they've had, the Virginia School Boards Association, they've had me a couple of times to speak about relationships between school boards and the appropriating bodies. And, you know, I didn't sugarcoat it, and I did all my notes, and, you know, I was pretty honest about sometimes it gets really tough, and I walk in and there's Dr. Heron. And so I did go ahead with what I said, but, you know, I was a little intimidated at, you know, but she seemed okay with it. So hopefully, we're still friends. But I did, also, I, I do tend to watch the school board meetings, and so a couple of weeks ago, while I was waiting for them to come on, there was a meeting that was from twenty fifteen. And what it was, was about what was featured, and I have no idea why it was at the top, but I thought, well, I had a couple of minutes, I'd pop on and see what exactly I was saying back in those days. And one thing that we were talking about was the Schools Foundation. And today, we were all, we had all been invited to the surprise grant delivery that they did today, where they delivered twenty awards in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. I was only able to go to two. But I did ask the Schools Foundation Chair Penny Pulley to send me some information about the W J C C Schools Foundation, just to, you know, let people know what it is about. And it was formed by the school board, she's got twenty fourteen, but I think the final vote was twenty fifteen. It is the primary tool for classroom enrichment, has innovative learning grants up to four thousand dollars each, and some include one grant that allowed elementary school students to learn to fly drones, requiring I T skills, drone safety, aviation terminology, computer coding. Another is a high school media center, which applied for multiple grants over several years to outfit a complete audio and video green room. The Schools Foundation recently expanded its mission to include sponsorship of the annual Teacher of the Year awards. Teacher retention is a primary concern of our school division due to the teacher shortage. The Schools Foundation awarded over six thousand dollars in monetary recognition directly to the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two Teachers of the Year, including recognition of several rookie teachers. They will again sponsor this twenty twenty-three Teacher of the Year award in May. Additionally, the Schools Foundation contributed ten thousand dollars in January as seed money for a new initiative called the Teacher Store. The brand-new Teacher Store will open this month with an inventory of commonly needed items so that teachers will no longer need to dig into their own pockets to supplement classroom necessities so their students can achieve their education. The Schools Foundation will serve as the fundraising arm for the Teacher Store to accept monetary contributions or donated items like paper, notebooks, or other things through the Schools Foundation website. So if anyone is interested in learning more, there is a link to the W J C C Schools Foundation on the W J C C Schools website. I, like I said, I only got to go to two awards today, but I, you know, they, there was a monetary difference in the awards, didn't matter. Both teachers were thrilled, and they had stacks going all over W J C C schools today. So I, if anybody's interested, please look into that. I'm really glad that it's still up and running. There were some on the school board at the time that, that weren't, weren't in favor of a foundation. They were very concerned, and I'm, and I'm glad to see that it has achieved what it set out to do and is still working at it. Then I do want to make a comment about solar. We have asked the county administrator to put this on our retreat topic. For me, a lot of the questions that you raised, I think, are very important, and also in my, in my attendance at the Virginia Association of Counties, there are several counties and boards of supervisors who have been working on this very topic, just trying to get some questions answered, just make sure that, that this is a safe way forward, because it does tend to be an avenue for people who don't necessarily want their land to become a housing development, don't, aren't farming, no one in their family's interested in farming, so what do you do with the land? But we, but we do need to make sure that the questions that are being asked by our citizens and by ourselves are being answered. So it is on our agenda for our retreat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Yes, we had a good meeting with Congressman Whitman, and we went over several things of our needs and wants in the county, and he said he'd look into that and see what he can do as far as, you know, schools. We, we talked about schools and the shortfall that we have with schools and how we're having to pay even more to try to keep up with the schools and keep, keep the budget up. We talked about the roads. We talked about the new county complex. We covered quite a bit of things, I think more than he figured we would discuss, but we have a lot of needs and wants, and, and how we can utilize any federal monies in order to move some of these projects or some of these things forward. So we had, we had a very good meeting, and hopefully, there's something will come out of that. Ed, Ed, Ed was a, a character and a half in, in this boardroom, and he'll be missed dearly. I know when we started this stuff about we needed something as far as water and what was going on with water, and, and he brought me a package that would choke a mule, and he says, now we started in seventy-eight talking about this issue. And he had everything laid out, and he had it all documented from start to finish and what our issues are, what we need to do. And he was always good. He was good about getting up to the podium and telling you if he didn't like something. But it wasn't against you, it was just, your thought is totally off, and let me get you straight on this item. And, but even if he railed you a little bit on the board, he always came back afterwards and said, you know, I didn't mean to be too rough, and, you know, but I just wanted to get that point across. So he was always good about that and, and cared dearly for our community, and that's, that's what we need, a lot of people that, that will, that will definitely, they care so dearly. We lost a member of the volunteer fire department, Johnny Flanagan, and believe it or not, he was seventy years in the fire service from Williamsburg to, to James City, and, and did everything he could do for us and was a really good individual, made it to eighty-nine, and, but he was right at nineteen when he started with the fire department and, and started as a heavy equipment operator at the same time. Johnny had a, a very good, long life, and he'll be missed dearly. And he was always the type that he would come over to the house, and sometimes he'd pull up in the front yard, and he'd just sit there and wait, see if you'd come out. And if you didn't come out, he'd turn around and leave and come back two weeks later, because he didn't want to bother you. He figured, well, you must be busy, so no need in going in to bother you. But he did a tremendous amount for the volunteers and for James City County, and I'm going to miss him dearly, and he was just a good guy, so. All right, county administrator.
Mr. Chair, I don't think I have any report this evening.
All right. All right. Okay, now, I don't see a need in going in the closed session. We're looking for an action for Sue Sadler and Vince Campagni III to be appointed as primary members to the RIFA for a new term that expires February fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven, and Jason Purse and Christopher Johnson appointed as alternate members of RIFA for a new term that will expire February fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So unless somebody wants to go in closed session to discuss any of that, that I've already said in open session, we can just move on.
I'll move that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have motion. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
All right, next we're looking for an adjournment to one P M. on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three for a business meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
All right, roll call, sir.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Thank you for your time tonight. Go home and have a good day.